Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee Meeting of August 22nd, 2016. For a couple of reasons. Firstly, because we have a superintendent of Rockland Schools, Dr. Alan Kronk. Dr. Kronk, the committees all look very much forward to a long working relationship with you and success in endeavoring to make Rockland Schools a better place every day. Welcome and looking forward to a long time of working together.
Yeah.
First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of June 27th, 2016.
Don't move.
That's a, we got a motion and a second, so we have a vote.
All favor.
All in favor, I'm sorry. That's a vote. All under communication, seeing nothing. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kronk for his first superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you Chairman Biggins. Just want to give you a brief update on my entry plan. I attended, I've joined a new superintendent's induction program. It's a three-year program and it's a partnership between Massachusetts Association of Superintendents and the Department of Education. It's a three-year program.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Dr. Kronk, did you actually switch your microphone on before you stuck it in your pocket?
Probably not, nope.
Top of it.
Green light.
There we go.
First mistake.
How about your cellphone?
It was ringing as, actually as you were describing, okay. Thank goodness for tape delay. So, I'm, I've joined a new superintendent's induction program there along with 28 other new superintendents in Massachusetts and we met for a full day on July 12th and we met again for a full day in August. I've been assigned a mentor, Mr. Jack Ahern, who some may remember as a former superintendent, longtime superintendent at Abington, so he and I have been communicating, meeting. Also as part of my entry plan, I've held more than 30 individual meetings with each of you and town leaders, including Alan Shaka and Eric Hart and police chief and Chief Duffy as well. So those have been great and they continue. We held, we have had a very, very busy summer getting ready for the opening of school and particularly at the Memorial Park School where we've moved three kindergarten classes. So I've spent time going into each building and watching their work and we held a first ever, and I think it'll be an annual event, we had a summer staff luncheon on August 16th. And the, the primary reason for that was to recognize and thank our maintenance and custodial staff and our secretaries and our administrators and principals for all the work that they do over the summer in getting ready for the 29th of August. So that was a great hour that we spent together. We had a nice event yesterday at our open, open stage. We had the Kenny Hadley Big Band and that was a One Rockland event with Rockland Cultural Arts Grant and our boosters, music boosters. It was a very good turnout. It was nice to see especially so many of our senior citizens out enjoying the music. We look forward to seeing that grow and to remind everyone about the Beatles Tribute Concert at 6:00 PM this Friday. And then finally, a kindergarten update, sort of a staffing update. We had to add that ninth section of kindergarten, so we now have six sections of kindergarten at Jefferson and three at Memorial Park. And our current today number is 100 and about 177. And today we opened up to choice, to our choice students and we expect to safely be at 185 by the time all is said and done. So that is my first superintendent's report.
How does the funding work, Doctor, as far as when we choice students for kindergarten? Do we still get the same funding as we would get for a first grader or a second grader?
Yes.
We do, great, okay. Where it's free for us, yeah, okay, good. And if another community doesn't offer free, they still have to pay?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
It seems as though the transition from bringing the classes over to Memorial Park is going quite well and from what I understand, folks at Memorial Park are really excited about seeing these bright-eyed young children, going to be joining them over there very soon.
Yeah, absolutely. We've had some great, the popsicles with principals and open house for the new first graders at Esten and Memorial Park has had an open house for their new students. It makes the, the students much more comfortable coming in on the first day. So it's nice. And also it's just nice to see the kids back in the building. It's why we're here, so.
Popsicles for the principal has been a great event, having my second child now going through the kindergarten, having experienced that. It's my young Ronan was so excited coming home from that, being able to see where he's going to be going to school and meet his principal and see some of the other kids that he's going to be going to school with. It's exciting to see what's going to be gracing the schools of Rockland High School and Rockland Public Schools for the next 12 years or so. Next on tonight's agenda, under reports, we have our monthly reports for June and we are going to be entertaining motions to approve reports from the administrators, the nurse and pupil personnel services.
Three motions?
Three seconds.
All those in favor?
I just have one quick question on that one. On the very first one, CPR certification for, I take it for Jim, is that it? Do we, how much, do we have all staff certified in CPR?
No.
Okay.
No.
And AED, we have enough of those?
I could find out exactly how many we have in each building, but I do know.
We have, we have.
We have, yeah.
How about EpiPens?
EpiPens?
Yeah.
Again, I can check with Kathy Ryan, but I'm.
Yeah, because I, you know, and just my personal experience in our school, you know, all the teachers have CPS certification and EpiPens training. We have to get re-certified every year if a new nurse comes in and makes us demonstrate.
Yeah, it's good to know. It's good for everyone to know.
I'd have to negotiate that, no?
Yeah, because that's because you have the nurse, you're not obligated to do that because you have someone who's trained usually, but.
If she's not around.
Over and above. You usually have a core group, don't you? You have a core group, yeah.
We have a crisis team in each school that are trained.
You phys ed people and your coaches are all trained.
Yes.
More would be good, though.
More, always more, and add stuff.
I'll be good at that.
That's it, I move on.
Next on tonight's agenda, we have financial reports. We'll be entertaining four motions to approve financial reports from the school department, the high school student activities account, the middle school student activities accounts and the cafeteria.
Four motions.
All those in favor? We have four votes, four approvals. Thank you very much. For your information, we have building rentals for the months of June and July, which are a bit thin, but I know will be picking up quite a bit as the school year goes on. Any questions or concerns from the committee relative to building rentals? Okay. Seeing nothing under new, under old business, we'll proceed to new business. First on the agenda under newer business is the opening of school. Dr. Kronk.
Thank you. So the elementaries, as I said, they've been busy moving classrooms around, getting ready for new kindergarten classes. Esten is very excited to welcome 77 new grade one students to their building and they had an open house and 48 attended, so they're very excited. The middle school is excited about their new science curriculum. They had some teachers trained for the new grade seven science curriculum. Lisa Ryan and the coding work that we began, that has begun in the elementary is going to continue in the middle school this year and so they're excited about that. And again, one book, one school. And I couldn't put my hands on the title before I came, but I will find it for you. The high school, we're excited to have a new principal, so Mr. Harrison has been, I think, very busy hiring and meeting people and holding, working his own entry plan, so holding meetings. Very excited about beginning the computer science at the high school. Very excited about open house coming up. Now we'll get a date to give you later. And I think that Assistant Superintendent for Lizzie has some information about buses.
Yes. All bus passes, grades one through 12, 12 have been mailed out. Kindergarten's being processed now. We still have kindergarteners registering and we still have new teachers. If anyone received a postcard, that means to come in and pay for the pass. We'll handle the pass then. We're open Monday through Friday, eight to four. Any questions, call Patty Penny. Her number is 781-878-1540 and she will handle any questions regarding busing.
Very good, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is fundraisers and on our, are on our agenda it lists in July 2015 through June 2016, but I believe it meant July 2016 through, or June 2017. So we have 13 fundraisers on the packet that we have here. Dr. Kronk, any comments or recommendations?
I recommend that we approve all of the fundraisers.
Very good. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
The only quick question I have on that is that we have One Rockland, I didn't see any One Rockland fundraisers here, that we got more coming, I think.
So tonight we're going to talk about the addition of that official position, but I will tell you that a number of folks have stepped up and have assumed leadership of that even without money, without pay. So that's why you don't see any formal requests, because we still have to post that position and then appoint a leader of that, but.
All right. So I expect that we're going to see more, even though this is supposed to be all encompassing for this year.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to, fine, fine and dandy.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is homeschooling. I know we have Mrs. Minigley with us tonight, correct, Doctor?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Hello.
Good evening.
I can just give you a quick update. We have, and I can kind of go over what the trend has been in our district over the last couple of years. For the school year 2014-15, we had 17 families that chose to homeschool their children for a total of 28 students. Last year we had 14 families totaling 25 students and this fiscal year 2016-2017, we have 15 families and there are a total of 25 students that will be homeschooled. So it has been pretty consistent. I will say that our families that are homeschooling have done a very comprehensive job with their children. They've all met the criteria of 900 hours of curriculum. Their curriculum, they've sent in either work samples or portfolios or assessments standardized and progress reports are high quality, they're aligned with curriculum our students that are attending the Rockland Public Schools are doing in the area of the reading, the writing, the math, science, the history, health, phys ed and just being good citizens. So all of the families pretty much that did it last year are doing it, are, you know, requesting to homeschool their children this year. We had three families move out of state. We had young, one young man that actually graduated and has been accepted at a college that will, he will be attending this year. And then one family has moved in one of our surrounding districts. So I think we've had a couple of new students, kindergarten students of families that were homeschooling some of their other children and probably one or two new families that will be homeschooling.
Questions or comments?
Quick question is that, what, a couple of these requests, they're using online courses, schooling courses?
I think they're doing a combination of some online. It's not like a virtual school, but I think they're supplementing what the families are doing in addition to.
Okay.
And they've been doing some, what they've been calling collaborative classes where some of the families have gotten together and do some kinds of either studies or content areas as a group.
On these online courses, any feedback on what they, you know, feedback as far as are they good, bad or indifferent?
No, they've been very good and, and again, they pretty much align with curriculum that we would require our students attending, you know, our public schools. The assessments that I've looked at and the work samples, you know, are of high quality and the students have done very well.
Okay, that was my next question.
Linda, last, oh, go ahead. Linda, last year, I think we talked about this and I know it doesn't make any difference, but it does to me, qualifications of these people that are going to be doing, educating their children. Some of them spell them out, others don't.
Right.
Now, I just kind of like to know what the qualifications are and if it's high school, that's fine. If it's, if it's fifth grade, that's fine, I guess, but I just kind of like to know and I thought, if I remember correctly, I asked you to include that in the new application, so maybe I'm wrong, I.
No, I know for the qualifications, all of them.
Because you had answered, you had answered me last year that, well, you have them in your records. Well, I don't have them in mine, so.
What, what the parent qualifications are?
Yeah.
Some of them have gone on to secondary, you know, post-secondary schools, some have done trades.
Yeah, I know that, but I don't know who's, who has and who hasn't, particularly the ones that don't answer the question.
But I don't think that there's a requirement with the child's law that they have to have attained a certain degree?
No, I know there isn't.
You're right.
But I just, my own satisfaction.
Well, I have it on file.
And I don't care, I care, but I don't, I know it doesn't matter.
Right.
If they're first grade education, I, I know that doesn't matter. Kind of matters to me, but I know it doesn't matter as far as the law is concerned.
Right.
But I just would kind of like to know from now on.
I could make copies of that and.
And the second question is, we have this many now, how many more do you expect?
Last year I think it was consistent all year, what we presented, you know, at the school.
We had additional ones through the year, I remember.
I don't know how many, I think, John, if I can remember, I think that there was one other family that either moved in or decided that they would like to.
I could be wrong, but I think there were more than one, I think.
And I think they brought it to one of our school committee meetings for approval or at least sent it over.
What are the things?
Because I remember talking to, you know, Superintendent Rettles about it.
One of the things I think we, we as a committee had asked that, you know, school starts on a certain date and that, you know, we want to know what their plans are as of that date. And if they're not teaching, if they're not educating their, their children as of that date, when are they starting and are they encompassing the whole 180 days of the 900 hours? And we look for, that the approval would be prior to the school year. Now, these all complied. Is there anybody else that hasn't complied that we know of? You know, that, you know, did it, did it last year, that did home education last year, but that hasn't come back with any requests this year yet? That we know that, I know you have some here that moved out of state, that's fine. Graduate moved to Florida, moved to Kava and stuff like that. Just the accountability of what we had last year, does it match up with this year? Have we accounted for everybody that was on our home education program as of last year?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah.
And there's one, this may be completely picky. There's one, that the person didn't sign the actual form, but they wrote their own and the only concern I have about that is if you read what they wrote, it's very vague and it kind of accounts for what they did last year, so I would just think that maybe, they might have already signed it sort of test to the 900 hours, because Tom and I noticed that and what they wrote doesn't.
Right, and I will follow up on that.
I spoke about this earlier on, she's going to follow up on that.
Oh, perfect.
But I agree, Liz, I think that when we, when we vote to approve these names, we'll vote that on the condition that this individual comes back with that signed.
Right.
Because while we, while we do need to legally let these people exercise their right for home education, they also do need to commit to the 900 hours and this individual, I'm sure by, just slight, just missed it, but before we approve it with the contingency that, to make sure that that does indeed get signed.
And once I get that signature, I will follow up and let you know that we have received it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We have 25.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other comments about homeschooling?
Yeah.
Okay. That being said, we have 25 people requesting approval for home education for 2016, 2017.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, that's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on tonight's agenda, we have three MOAs to discuss on our next three agenda items. The first being an MOA for an athletic game administrator and a One Rockland advisor. Dr. Kronk?
So the athletic game administrator MOA, we discussed this, I think the school committee already discussed at length and voted on this. We were reviewing the responsibilities of the, of the athletic game administrator and originally the stipend was set for $5,000 and we thought that was a bit high after looking, comparing, we'd like to, that's why it's here again, so we're lowering that to $4,000. That's why the athletic game administrator MOA is here. One Rockland advisor, again, at the end of last year, you know, Mr. Rowe had done a very, very good job getting us started and he put together a sort of an outline of how many hours he spent and all the responsibilities and these are all things that are done outside of school time. And so we looked at other, other stipends and other leadership advisory positions and thought that that was an appropriate stipend for the One Rockland advisor. I don't know if you want to do these one by one or if you want me to go through all?
Yeah, one by one.
Okay, okay. So any questions about other one of those?
Take a motion to approve?
The only thing I would ask, and this sounds, again, picky, sorry.
Okay.
Question slash statement is, I'm assuming that we're tracking these stipends really, really closely because I find that what happens sometimes with positions in other parts of town is it's not always kind of accounted for, so if they keep a log, at least of just kind of what they did, maybe it's not always hours, so that in the future we can say, this is how this position's grown, if it even grows. That's the only thing that I get a little bit worried about because stipends tend to sometimes go off into never, never land.
Yeah, or they're created at one point and then the programs change and.
Yeah, so we want to show growth if we need to increase, you know, there's potential for a lot of growth and work here, I think, so.
One suggestion might be is we get reports from, of plethora of people here. Could that be part of your, one of the reports?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, monthly report, and say we've done this, this is what we've done, whatever, whatever you think it is.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that.
So we have a motion to approve the athletic game administrator and the One Rockland advisor.
Second, that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, that's a vote. Next on the agenda, we also have an MOA for the district-wide sick bank and access to that sick bank. Dr. Kronk?
So the story, the story with this is we had, we have a number of bargaining units and some are much smaller than others. So for example, custodians, the way this worked before, custodians were a smaller group and therefore to make the sick bank work, they had to put in two days, they had to give, give two days of their sick bank, of their sick days to be vested in the sick bank, whereas teachers put in one. So the association, you know, saw the equity issue and have come together to create one large sick bank. And so this is just a reorganization to make things more equitable for those smaller groups.
Okay.
As a representative of the, of this board on the sick bank committee, I must admit, I always thought it was district-wide. I never realized that there were different strokes for different folks.
I didn't.
And I think it's always been kind of treated as a district-wide, whether it's been formally said or not, so I would, I would recommend that we adopt this.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a vote, thank you. Next, another MOA for paraprofessional coverage and for building secretary. Dr. Kronk?
So prior to this MOA, if a paraprofessional was covering for a secretary who was out that day, the differential they were paid was based on how much that secretary made. So if you were subbing for, you know, a very, a very senior secretary, your differential would be much greater than if you were, you were covering for a first or second year secretary and so it created, again, equity issues. So the association looked at all of the, when this occurred and how many times and they came up with an average and said, let's just pick, this is, this is an average number, so $10 differential per hour for the, when you're covering as a paraprofessional for a building secretary.
That has to make it easier for payroll, too.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So that, that is, that is why this MOA exists.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is a request for approval for Ron Larson's Precalculus textbooks. This is the first reading. Dr. Kronk?
Yes. Principal Harrison, would you like to come up and, if you have any questions?
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Thanks. Do you want me to talk a little bit about each book?
Please.
Sure. So we're recommending, these books are really recommended for not this current year, but the 2017, 2018 school year. And the purpose for making the request now is we'd like to use, but we won't be getting the books until the following year, hopefully with your approval, we'd have the time throughout the upcoming year to really use our common planning time and our professional development time to really work on curriculum alignment with the new textbooks. So it's really for planning purposes to make the request now. We're recommending for Precalculus that we adopt Ron Larson's Precalculus Without Limits. The purpose with Ron Larson is Algebra I and Geometry are currently using Ron Larson, so we thought we would align it with the same author. We're doing the same recommendation with Calculus as well. Our Precalculus book has not been updated since the 90s. The last copyright was 2000, so we think it's an appropriate time. The problems reflect real-life examples and it really covers a different tiered approach of instruction with algebraic, graphics and numeracy, three different approaches for math. There's great online resources, so we really recommend both the Precalculus and Calculus textbooks for the same reasons, just an updated version. We currently don't have textbooks for the honors calculus, they're currently using supplemental, supplement materials, which is fine, but we could have purchased more of the Finney textbooks, but we said, why not just wait and have it all Larson? So that's our recommendation.
So the second one with the three additional chapters there, it just weighs more and it costs more?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's a relationship there.
All right, okay.
He's a masculine, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Proportional.
I want to go, I want to get into fractals, though.
I think a motion to table.
The motion that we tabled?
Second.
In a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a vote, two votes.
Thank you.
Let's table, we think we need to take a second vote on the second, on the second request for approval as well. Do we have a motion to waive that reading as well?
No, we, we want to table it, right?
Table.
A motion to table.
To table it, excuse me.
Right, right. Motion to table.
In a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is the ratification of the custodians' contract.
Thank you. So it was an amicable negotiation, things went very well, it was ratified just this past week by the custodians, the association. I am recommending that we accept the ratificat, that we accept this custodial contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is maintenance. Dr. Kronk?
I am going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent for Lizzie.
Okay. We have done major renovations this summer. If you've seen any of the buildings under the direction of Mark Schaum and his crew. So I'll give you a brief overview of each school. Esten, we have a new generator. At all three elementary schools, we've replaced sinks, toilets and stall petitions. Those are in need of repair and we painted hallways. There was an air conditioner put in the front office at Esten. The custodians and the maintenance crew have helped move classrooms and smart boards. At Jefferson, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but we did carpeting in the front foyer and we also did what's called VCT vinyl composite tile in the very front hallway and going down the ramp where the doors entered from the front of Jefferson to the court area. And let's see, kitchen repairs, grease traps, they moved the library. They, Mark and his crew did weather stripping and thresholds throughout the school. At Memorial Park, they did missing sewer inverts for sewer backups. They repaired venting, reinforced the front entryway, painted walls, ceilings, built three classrooms with insulated walls and really did a great job with that. Handicap rails, they hung fans, fixed broken window screens. At the daycare, we put in new mulch in the large playground, set up a lot of playground equipment. High school, middle school, installed a double security door over by the gym area. They took care of the freezer at the middle school, which was broken, fire glass replaced at the middle school cafeteria. The showers, we're replacing still our, all the flushometers, they were too weak, you know, the flushing. They repaired the scoreboard, the store refrigerator in the home ec room, or consumer science room. Doors replaced all around the building, doors that were in need of repair, lighting issues, air conditioning units. They opened up the sewer vent in the high school bathroom and the big thing is that the, Mark is reprogramming with the help of Daless, the BMS, the Building Management System for the Heating and Cooling System. That is a big job. And he also painted with his staff the auditorium floor and railings. And that is just some of the things that were done in maintenance, along with all many, many other small items that were done. But you'll see the differences as you walk through the schools. And the schools are old, but we're doing the best we can with them.
Mr. Scham and his crew have had a busy summer, for sure.
Yes, they have.
But the schools are looking great, and they're clean and safe and ready to welcome our kids for another productive school year.
Absolutely.
'Tis the season for the locker room to become smelly.
It's going to be good this year.
Is that resolved?
Yes.
It is resolved.
Yes, in fact, Mark had the...
We should not expect any more problems there.
No. We have, the ventilation system has been expanded.
Yeah.
And also, Mark had the ozone generator person in to talk about how that works, how it works efficiently, and how it should be working.
Good.
So that's in the process now of being, we're going to keep a close eye on it, but it should be good.
Wonderful.
We're looking forward to having a non-smelly locker room.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other thing on this instruction? Expect that the building and all the plumbing inspectors and the electrical inspectors have been involved in all this?
Yes. Mark's pulled permits, and he also has licenses himself, so he's been able to work with everyone at Town Hall, and they've done...
Super. That's always good to hear that.
Work together.
We should have that cooperation between us and them.
Yes.
We maintain that.
Glad to hear. Thank you, Colleen.
We're doing well, sure.
Next on tonight's agenda, personnel information for June, July, and August. Dr. Kron.
We are working hard at concluding our hiring for the year. You can see the lengthy, lengthy list of appointments. Today was the first day for new staff induction. Tomorrow is the breakfast at 7:30. We hope we see as many of you can attend. So we are in very good shape with personnel. We're hoping to be fully staffed by the opening of school, which sounds like, why wouldn't it be done a month ago? But I can tell you, we're not alone. We had a colleague from a neighboring town in the office today, and they're looking for blah, 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 blah. So, we are, but I will tell you, the people that we've hired, I could not be more pleased with the quality and the character of the people that we have brought on board. I just see, we are just adding value, you know, adding opportunities for kids with all of these hires. So, very exciting.
Have we hired a math teacher for the high school yet?
We have, we, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, good.
That's the Craig Johnson?
But we did, yes, to replace. So, yes, some know Mr. Johnson, Mr. Craig Johnson, longtime math teacher, is relocated to the Cape, where his wife is from, and we will miss him. But we're happy for him and for his family. We would be closer, so...
You don't expect any more resignations, you know, in the next couple of minutes?
I never expect resignations. But whenever my pocket vibrates, I get a little concerned.
Oh, changes to just a different tone?
Right, yeah.
The other one, I see we hired a daycare director?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that a permanent hire?
Did they have experience with that before?
Yes, the person that's in the position now has been with the daycare for 18 years.
Yes, that one.
Yes. And she is qualified and certified.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for that.
Can I just make a correction? I mentioned Daedalus, it's Dakin that we've been working with on the reprogramming of the cooling and heating system. Yeah, it's Dakin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Forlizzi.
Yes.
Lastly, public service announcements. Mrs. Henderson.
School's starting, so I just ask everyone to, don't give anyone hassles, get yourselves together, and try to be on time for the first day, because everyone's been here working really hard, and every day after that.
Everybody's on time for the first day, second day.
Not entirely.
Mr. Mills?
Just that it's been a nice summer. I hope everybody's enjoyed it, you know, it's waning, and so again, just, you know, get ready, get set. And what date, do we open up yet? What date?
29.
It's 29. A lot of people have asked me, why are we opening up so early?
Ask us in June.
Because it's in June, you know. I say, ask me in June.
Mr. Phillips?
Just that, I still get excited every year. I intend to go on my annual tour of the buildings, and I just know what I'm going to find, because personnel do magnificent jobs, the custodians, and our teachers, who have already, I'm sure many, many, many of them have already been in their classrooms getting things just the way they want them, so that they hit the ground running the first day. As I say, I get excited every year. I just think it's a great time of the year for teachers, administrators, school committee, and everyone who's involved in the education of our Rockland kids.
Agreed. Excitement for sure. I'm excited, I know everyone's excited. It's a time of great transition as well. It's a time that teachers and parents, and I said this earlier tonight, go from enjoying their coffee to really needing their coffee. It's also a time where we can go from saying goodbye to last year. You know, we've had some folks that we said goodbye to, both in our faculty and our administration, our senior class, and it's time that we say hello to a lot of new folks. We've got some freshmen coming into the high school. We've got a new class of bright-faced kindergarteners that'll be coming into our school system, and a whole lot of new employees. It's a very, very exciting time. It's great to have Dr. Kron, and Dr. Kron, I think you did a great job in your first meeting here.